Can I have motion to re-enter, or to enter, public session? Mrs. Mamolito, seconded by Mrs. Weiss, all in favor, five zero. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, even though there's no one in the room, there's people probably at home watching. And we have a local celebrity in our midst over the break. Many of you probably are aware from Facebook, Twitter, the school website, that Dr. Bossert was awarded one of the People of the Years from the Times of Honey to Northport and East Northport, based on a very kind letter that Mrs. Mamolito wrote. So, we are appreciative of all of those kind words that were in the letter. And we're appreciative of you being the Person of the Year at Elwood, along with all of your staff, and the good things that you've done. You're no Brad Pitt, but you are a Person of the Year.
Well, thank you. And I would like to thank the board for your support. And although some accolades came in my direction, I very purposefully credited the incredible team that we have here and the district, which is inclusive of the Board of Education, for all of the progress that we have made and continue to make. As the Race for Excellence has no finish line, we are enjoying our sprint, but we have work left to do. And I appreciate your continued support of those efforts. And I thank everyone within the district who's helped us to achieve our goals. So while my name was in the article, it is certainly a team effort that has brought us to the heights that we are currently enjoying. So thank you all for your contributions as well. And it's nothing like one's children to help keep you grounded. And they said, "Look Dad, they put the dog in the middle." So I think they saw the golden retriever as the real Person of the Year. But it was a nice recognition, unexpected recognition, but definitely appreciated. So thank you very much.
Go into your holiday season follow-up.
Oh, yes. We, you know, being that this is our first meeting of the year, first of all, Happy New Year to all. We really had an enjoyable holiday season. You know, we don't take a break from focusing on our work and our academics, but we do take a pause from time to time to just enjoy the aspects of the holiday season. And one of the things that came together this year was something new and something really enjoyable for all of our students. Last year, John Glenn High School, the faculty started a door decorating contest where they just, you know, made their doors a theme for the season. And some real nice creativity was demonstrated by the faculty and staff. This year, I think they just sought to one-up each other by making it even grander and more elaborate. And in keeping with our theme of "All Are Welcome", it became a holidays around the world display. And because of the time and effort and just artistic talents that went into this, the brains over there thought it would be a nice idea to share it beyond just these students of the high school. So for the first time, with some help from our transportation department, and our PTA, and lots of other elves, we brought our second graders and our fourth graders over to see the high school decorations. And while they were there, they were given goodie bags, and they were greeted by carolers, and they were able to enjoy performances from our band and orchestra. And then just tour the halls and see the different durakishens. And I can tell you, having been there, some of the students were talking about how it was their favorite field trip thus far. And some others talked about how they couldn't wait to get to John Glenn High School. I guess they think every day is like that at John Glenn High School. So it really was an amazing experience. And it was something that was just grassroots, you know, some ideas that came from the faculty of ways to enjoy the holiday season while, you know, keeping all of the instructional focus as well. So it was really just an enjoyable time of year. And that day where the elementaries visited Glenn was, might have been my favorite day of the four years I've been at Elwood. It really was a wonderful, wonderful experience. So I just wanted to share that with the board. That's lots and lots of pictures and video that we posted to our website and shared with our community. And next year, I'm sure I'll think of another way to help it to continue to grow.
Okay, we are up to the recent remarks portion of our agenda. Seeing as there are no residents, I'm not going to read the whole blurb. And we are going to move on to our discussion items, which is 2019 and '20 Goals Update from Dr. Bossert. Oh, yeah, I skipped over something. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes from the December 12th, 2019 meeting? Mrs. Mamolito, seconded by Mrs. Weiss, all in favor, five zero. And now for Dr. Bossert's Goals Update.
If it pleases the board... If it pleases the board, I'll just remain in my regular seat since we are not performing for an audience this evening. Each year, the Board of Education tasks the administration with drafting goals which the board later reviews, refines, and then adopts as our goals for the school year. So for the 19-20 school year, the board charges the administration with using all relevant information and data to formulate goals that would help to drive our work for this school year. And at a prior meeting on September the 26th, the board adopted four goals to help guide our work. So we wanted to take an opportunity tonight at near the midpoint of our school year to update the board and community in our progress towards achieving these goals. So as we just said, the Race for Excellence has no finish line. So even though we feel we are in a good place, we know there are additional heights that we can attain and we can reach. So let's talk about some ways that we feel we are doing that. So to remind the board and the community, the first goal that we focus on every year is extraordinary student focus. We want to make sure that we're keeping our main thing, our main thing, our mission and our vision for our school district, our keen focus on academics, and helping every child to reach his or her full potential. So we talked about striving to maintain consistency and articulation through grade levels, departments, and buildings, committing to depth and breadth of instructional and co-curricular programming, and sharing and demonstrating the belief that Elwood is one of the finest school districts in the state nation, and one that the entire community can take extraordinary pride. So just some of the things. And I believe the board received a much more lengthy supplemental document. Did the board receive?
Yes.
It was in your faculty's hands there. So while the board has received a much more elaborate document highlighting lots and lots of things that are taking place throughout our buildings, what I wanted to do for the community was just focus on some of the highlights. So when we look under Goal Number One, there are some things of particular pride I wanted to address. The board has been successfully updated regarding the growth on our Regents and AP scores. We've done a lot of focus on our data. Our data helps to inform our instruction, helps us to refine our craft, and really helps us to focus on where our gaps may be. So there have been a number of board meetings earlier this year that helped to report to the board where our achievement levels are in some very tangible areas like AP and Regents results. Through the work of the Curriculum Office, Dr. Hall, Mrs. Vaughn, Mrs. Kelly Corman, we have facilitated curriculum writing projects in many, many areas: math, science, social studies, English, world languages, academic vocabulary, our continued focus on mindfulness and related activities, certainly technology integration under Mr. Tranquino's leadership, health under Mr. Shanahan's leadership. There has been so much curriculum development and focus. The one thing about curriculum is it's never completed document. Each time you develop a curriculum document, you begin refining it immediately. There is always something changing. There is always something that needs to be added. There is always a new focus. So every curriculum document that we create in our district, we consider a living and breathing document that we're constantly evaluating based upon what we interpret as our gaps. So curriculum writing is never completed. It's an ongoing effort. We have, however, successfully launched an academic vocabulary initiative at the elementaries and middle school and extended this project to the high school. Academic vocabulary is something that has to become a focus. And you'll find, when you visit our classrooms, that teachers are using authentic terminology germane to their subject area. And it's funny to sit in a first grade classroom and hear some of the terms that students are being introduced in the area of science and things like that. But that's a purposeful focus. And the curriculum team has developed key lists of terminology that students should know in each core area through each year of their education. So it's been a targeted focus of our development and a systematic approach we're using in the classroom. One that I believe the board and the community has heard a great deal about is a focus of our Superintendent's Conference Day and news literacy. We were fortunate enough to secure a partnership with Stony Brook University, and we had Professor Howard Schneider come in here to really motivate the staff to begin this investigation of news literacy. And through his introductory practices, we have a faculty, K-12, that is motivated to do everything we can to build news media literacy within our students. We've had requests the whole parent information nights on this topic. We have teachers lining up to receive continued service, in-service training on this topic. We have programs being developed so we can have course for credit taking place at the high school, as well as an initiative with Stony Brook to become a lighthouse district. And we would be in the first in Suffolk County to obtain that distinction should we meet all the requirements. Any questions about any of these bullets?
What does a lighthouse district signify?
Dr. Hall, you've been leading this initiative. Would you like to answer that question?
The lighthouse district signifies that you're partnering with the Center for News Literacy at Stony Brook University as a school district where you're going to introduce students predominantly in middle school and high school, but also with some friends of the younger grades, about how to be consumers of information. It's based on the belief that there was a time when students received information primarily from adults, but that now students' access to the internet and social media has made outside sourcing their first source of information. And so they don't have that adult to help them filter what it is that they're hearing and understanding. And so the skills of news literacy are really teaching students how to be consumers of what they're looking at and question its validity and question the source that it's coming from. And it's believed to be something that's an integral skill toward every subject area and to their own personal lives. So as a lighthouse district, we would be having teachers participate in a summer institute at Stony Brook University. And then we would be doing curriculum writing that would be funded through a grant from Stony Brook. And then we would embed units of study in news literacy in specific places, in the middle school and the high school. And we have a team of educators who have come together to work on our application, which has been submitted. And it represents teachers from across the disciplines because everyone sees the relevance and need for the skill for students.
We're very excited about this initiative. And we are mostly motivated by the fact that, you know, we planted a seed, and the faculty wants to develop a forest. And this is something that we brought forward as an administration, thinking that was important for our students and hoping that our faculty would become engaged in agreement. The faculty has embraced this initiative with such veracity that we have to pull back the reins to say we need to have a systematic approach to introducing it. So this is really something that's been highly motivating to the teachers that will be involved in it and will bring great benefit to our students. Our second goal that was adopted by the board was about our school climate. You know, as we discussed at prior board meetings, we had conducted a school climate survey which gave us lots of relevant data about how our students, faculty, and parents, their perceptions about different areas of our district. And using that data, we looked at some areas that perhaps were best to focus on. And we pledged to work with our new food services director and other key staff members to make certain healthy and appetizing choices are available in all school cafeterias. We talked about making sure certain programs are made available to focus on student relationships with peers, and building initiatives, healthy interactions. And we talked about enhancing instructional opportunities relating to substance abuse, alcohol specifically, and vaping through health classes, science classes, and school assemblies. And I'm pleased to report that we feel we've made significant progress in each of those areas. And these are some of the highlights. We have shared the results of the school climate survey with the board and community to look at the areas to more keenly focus. And we have had those conversations with each of our faculties, each of our principals on Superintendent's Conference Day, teamed up with a central office team member to go through these results and really get the faculty's response. And I have to be candid, with some of the feedback that the students gave us on the climate survey, the teachers were not very pleased. And they postured in a way where they were really questioning the validity of the results. So we had to have some difficult and uncomfortable conversations of, if this is what the students are reporting, it is the reality. Perception is reality. You may not feel this way. You may not perceive yourself this way. But if this is what the students are reporting, these are the things we need to be attentive to. So there was some hard dialogue, some uncomfortable dialogue, but it became very productive dialogue because we had teachers and other staff members begin reviewing their own practices in the classroom to be responsive to what the students were telling us they needed. So that was a big portion of Superintendent's Conference Day and a lot of the follow-up work that has happened. You know our district is very heavily invested in the Long Island Consortium for Equity and Excellence, known as LISCY. And we send a team to, is it monthly or quarterly? Seven meetings of LISCY where we're able to focus on different areas of equity. You know that the district had been previously identified for some disproportionality issues that cause us to really look internally at our practices to say, what do we need to do to make sure our mantra of "All Are Welcome" truly reflects that "All Are Welcome"? And some of the practices that we engage in simply need to be reevaluated to make sure that we were giving every student equal access to the best parts of our program and to make sure that there is something for everyone so every student can achieve his or her own potential. Food service, we didn't want to ignore that portion of our data from the climate survey. If students and parents feel we can do a better job with our offerings in the cafeteria, we wanted to make sure we did that. Our new first service director has really embraced the challenge of working with principals, working with their staff, getting feedback from students directly on what else would you like to see? We've introduced some new food choices. We've taken some things away. And we've tried to change the climate in the kitchens a little bit just to make it a more attractive option for the students to participate in. We don't have a very high percentage of students who are engaged in our lunch program. So we want to make sure we're being responsive to those deficiencies to encourage more students to use it. And we've done some things with our breakfast program as recently as this week to try to make it a more inviting option to our students who may need breakfast service. So there's good things happening under Mara's direction as well. We have partnered at the middle school with the Anti-Defamation League to introduce "No Place for Hate." It's something that is all-encompassing. The students who are involved in the Student Life Committee work to identify the topics. The Anti-Defamation League will cover a host of topics over a period of years. But the students help to determine what the focus would be this year at the introductory period. And they came up with things that they felt their classmates may struggle with, that they were struggling with. So the focus on anti-bullying inclusively, things of that nature, were really student-driven. And the teachers have embraced the "No Place for Hate" program and will continue to develop it. The middle school continues their goal of becoming a schools-to-watch school. We anticipate achieving that by June of next year. There are many, many challenges, many, many obligations that we have before we can be on that list. I am happy to report that Dr. Sapienza is viewed as a schools-to-watch evaluator for our region and spent a day earlier this week examining another middle school who is a candidate for schools-to-watch. So she's getting direct insight about the things that need to be done for our school to achieve that distinction. And we look forward to accomplishing that. And at John Glenn High School, the board has previously heard about the Student of the Month initiative and the Nobel Night Initiative. It's all about identifying and celebrating our successes. Very often, we can all fall into the trap of focusing only on our areas in need of growth and efficiency. And I think we all agree it's important to take time to celebrate accomplishments and recognize the good work and the hard work that our students and our faculty are doing. So those initiatives at Glenn have been very well received. And of course, our continued focus on mindfulness and teaching to the whole child have been ever-present in our classroom. We want to make sure that our focus on mental health stays consistent. We want to make sure that we're acting in a proactive way and we're not responding to the crisis that takes place. And again, I'd like to thank Dr. Hall for her leadership in our mindfulness initiative and thank our faculty and staff who have so warmly embraced it. Goal number three is to continue focus on safety and security. We are very fortunate that we have had the full support of the Board of Education and the community to really evaluate all aspects of our organization, to make sure that we are hardening our systems as far as the physical safety of our building. But then from the social-emotional well-being, we are also looking very healthy at the whole child and our wellness activities that take place during the instructional portion of our day. And this is the goal that the board adopted in September reflecting on those efforts. So some of our accomplishments, just some of them, have been working with our new directive of security, really including all of our practices. It is great to have such a skill set of eyes. It's always good to bring in a fresh lens to look at the things you're doing to say, here are things that perhaps you should be evaluating to do differently. And some of the initiatives, you know, were initially perceived with some skepticism of could we really do it? Requiring students to present their identification before entering John Glenn High School, I was very skeptical. I wasn't sure how that would work. I wasn't sure how buses would ride, all in concert, students would all flood that main entrance to the high school. And we would have time to scan in every ID to make sure that every student that was entering grounds belonged there, to make sure there weren't any adolescents who are not Glenn students entering the building or students who perhaps were on suspension entering the building. But they've done it. They've done it effectively. They continue to refine it. There are always hurdles to overcome, like the students who continually forget to bring their ID, but they are students at the high school, things like that, as we continue to learn and grow. But it's a system that we had not thought about putting into place. And once the suggestion came up, it was, how can we best do it? And the team put together a system that is making it work. We have extensively talked about locking the gates to the campus in certain off-hours. That is now happening. I am pleased to report to the board that I have not yet heard from any members of the community about any terrible inconveniences caused by closing the gate during those off-hours on the weekends and late nights. And we will continue to look at everything that we're doing to make sure this is the safest possible environment for our students. There are some things that we'd like to do that the budget may or may not allow for in the coming years. But we continue to harden our systems and change behaviors and practices to make sure our facilities are as safe as they can be. Another area that's been beneficial is under Mr. Shanahan's direction. We've gone to the family ID, online registration for all things health involving athletics. For those members of the board and community that haven't used it yet, it basically takes all the forms, all the documents, all the paper that was once necessary to have a student participate in athletics and brings them an online, electronic environment far more user-friendly for the parent and far more manageable for the athletic department and those who need access to that information to make sure we always have it at the ready. This was of minimal cost to the district and I think of great benefit to the district. And then we talked about the enhancements to our PPS staff in the form of our newly-added psychologist to look very carefully at what his roles and responsibilities would be to make sure we're maximizing the benefit of the position that the board was gracious enough to add two years ago. And we're continuing to refine our staffing within the mental health department. Mrs. Wilkinson recently made a addition to our staff in the form of a psychologist who has been assigned as a permanent sub, who's able to come in and do some additional work to help free our permanent staff members to focus more on our student population rather than some of the testing and paperwork that's necessary function of the position. We may be seeking to do the same in some social working. And if to give you a preview of the budget proposal, that's an area we'll be very careful at. The social work position is one essential to our faculty. And it's an area where we think we might be a bit short right now. And should the budget allow for any expansion of our mental health support staff, that's an area that we'll evaluate closely and discuss with the board. And finally, the fourth goal was pertaining to fiscal responsibility and stability. We want to make sure we're not looking at our program on a year-to-year basis, that we have an effective plan in place to maintain our financial stability and plan for challenges that we may face or flexibility that we may enjoy. We want to make sure that our capital project and our planning is moving forward so that our facilities continue to meet student needs. And we want to make sure that our community is actively engaged in all discussions about the financial future. We do everything in public. Whether the public elects to participate or not, We do everything in public. Whether the public elects to participate or not is up to them. But we do not make any decisions under the cloak of darkness or behind the curtain. So all of our discussions about budget planning will begin in earnest at the next meeting on January 3rd. So we do invite the community to be present, to participate, to let us know their priorities and give us feedback on our presentations about next year's program. But thus far this year, we've enjoyed an internal audit which showed no areas in need of focus or correction. Is very, I think gratifying for our business office and Ms. Dunkle to receive a report that certainly always gives recommendations but identified no exposures to the district. We are in very good hands in the business office, Ms. Dunkle's leadership and her excellent team. The work that was included in our capital bronze progressing along the timeline that has been set by our architects and our engineers. The biggest need has been completed. All four of our buildings now have brand-new roofs, so the interior work that was waiting to take place until we knew the roofing was complete can now take place. So ceiling fans are being installed across the district. Air conditioning and air handling work is taking place. We're looking at some of our ventilation systems and those priority items are being addressed. And this summer, there will be a full docket of work that will take place throughout our campuses. Kudos to Mr. Tranquino, who is always looking for ways to improve our students' access to technology and do it with as little expense to the taxpayer as possible. So one of the things that we were able to accomplish this year was upgrading 120 older desktops to make them in usable condition for our students, make them really accessible and helpful to our program at an expense of $44,000. Now, the savings to the district of not replacing those dishes was $44,000 and now those students have access and we can use the funding in other areas to supplement our program. And again, our HR, working with district administrators, we are in a tight budget cycle. And the board and the community is well aware that we had to make some painful reductions to our staffing in order to bring our budget under the tax cap for this year. And when we look at our staffing, we are looking at it to the hour, to the minute, to the point one of our FTEs. And the very close examination has really ensured that we are maximizing the staff that we have. And we've made some further reductions during this year of positions that we just were able to condense under the responsibility of other individuals. And we, we are finding ourselves in a place of not excess, but comfort. We are budgeting to the person, to the dollar, to the minute. So when we can find areas for further reduction, we've taken those actions. So that is really some of the highlights. The board is certainly privy to a document that has 150 or so additional bullets that you are free to review and ask for any questions or comments on your own. But that is what we put together as a highlight of our progress thus far. So we thank you for your continued support of our initiatives and ask for any questions.
I do have one. Going back to goal number one, one A. We were striving to maintain consistency and articulation throughout grade levels, departments, and buildings. Are we doing that through bringing consistent curriculum? Or are we doing that even more specifically by encouraging different presentation of the curriculum by each staff member? Does that make sense?
So...
Delivery of the curriculum.
I think I understand your question and I'll answer it this way. We look for consistency. We don't look for uniformity. So when we prepare curriculum documents, we're not handing teachers a script. We're handing, handing them a playbook. And different teachers use different modalities, different strategies, different materials in order to achieve the goals. But what we do want to make sure is that the goals remain consistent so that our students, regardless of which teacher they've experienced, leave the grade level with the same skill set to move on to the next grade or next subject area. Any other questions from the board? Well, then we thank you for your continued support. And at the end of the school year, the schedule does call for a full evaluation of our goals at the conclusion of the year. So we'll have the opportunity to have a similar discussion.
Now we'd like to recognize the donations. Mrs. Mammalito, can you accept the donations this evening? Thank you.
Tonight, we would like to recognize the following donations, anticipated donations to the district. $1,440 to support the Harley AM Engineering Program Gym Games for the Fall 2019 Session. That is from the Elwood Booster Club. From Leo Garden and Landscape Corporation, they are donating the installation of all the materials related to the baseball field brick paver fundraising project with an estimated value of $5,000. And again, from the Elwood Booster Club, the materials necessary to construct the baseball field brick paver fundraising project with an estimated value of $5,000. And again, from the Elwood Booster Club, they donated 11 spin bikes valued at $1,700 for the use of the fitness center at the Elwood Middle School and John Glenn High School. Thank you to all the community members who contribute to these organizations and to all our volunteers that help run it.
Can I have a motion to accept the donations?
My apologies. The $1,440 is from the Elwood Athletic Club, not the Boost Club.
Can I have a motion to accept the donations? Mr. Lemena, seconded by Mrs. Weiss, all in favor, five zero. Thank you for all those who donate. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda vote? Mr. Tomio, seconded by Mrs. Weiss, all in favor, five zero. We're up to the second resident of the march. Still seeing no residents. I will skip that blurb. Can I have a motion to reconvene into executive session to discuss the superintendent's material evaluation? Mr. Lemena, seconded by Mrs. Weiss, all in favor, five zero. Thank you very much.